Good evening and welcome to the July 9, 2018, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Our Chair, Richard Wells, is unavoidably detained out of state this evening, and so I get to perform the only role that a Vice Chair is required to perform, and that is to sit in the seat of the Chair, since the Chair is unavailable. Before we get started, I'm going to ask you to indulge me. Many bodies such as this, such as the Congress and the School Committee in our town, say the Pledge of Allegiance before they start, and so I'd ask everyone to join me as we begin in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you for that. We have the agenda that's been posted. I'm aware of no changes or to the agenda, that last-minute changes to the agenda, so we'll go right down to number two on the agenda, which is review and approval of minutes. There are no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move right to item three on the agenda, which is to confirm future meeting dates. The future meeting dates that we have listed are July 23, 2018, August 13, 2018, and August 27, 2018. Any discussion of those future meeting dates? Seeing none? No issues with those future meeting dates?
There's also the East Milton Deck meeting on Wednesday, July 18.
Wednesday, July 18. And Mike, where is that going to work?
7:00 PM at the Council on Aging.
7:00 PM, Wednesday, July 18, 7:00 PM at the Council on Aging. That'll be a posted meeting, and that will be a meeting that we will be running?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, all right. So we have four future meeting dates then. The July 18 at the Council on Aging, July 23, August 13, and August 27. Any other questions, discussions on the future meeting dates? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizen speak. Do we have anyone for citizen speak? I see someone rising, so if you could, there's a sign-in sheet, I believe. We all know who you are, Ned, but if you could just write your name clearly on the sheet, name and address, then we can proceed.
All right. Good evening, I'm the Board. My name is Ned Corcoran. I live at 70 Morton Road. I am a Town Meeting Member in Precinct 3, and I'm here personally and in my capacity as Counsel for the Falcone Companies and the Falcone Project. I'm here because we had requested to be before the Board tonight, and for reasons I'm not entirely clear of, we did not make the agenda. And the Planning Board has just canceled its meeting for Thursday. So we started some public discussions on the Falcone Project late May, before this Board, May 29, and we before the Planning Board on May 24, and you convened a joint meeting with the Planning Board on June 29, excuse me, June 21. It now appears that the next opportunity for public discussion of the Falcones' plans and the town's willingness to engage in a process will take place five weeks post that joint meeting, with Labor Day now slamming hard down on us just on the other side of that. We know that this is a difficult project for East Milton in particular, but for the town to consider, but we are asking for the Boards to convene a working group as soon as possible, to see whether or not we can work towards a 40R outcome. We think that the 40R presentation that was made at the joint meeting was a good one. We think that offers the town some significant benefits associated with the development of the project, not least of which the town would gain significantly more parking, access to state grants, and other transportation improvements to be funded by the Falcones as part of their project. Having said that, we know that there remain some significant issues, not least of which is height. Don't know whether we can get over the height issue, but collectively, we need to move to an understanding whether that issue is solvable or not sooner rather than later. What'll sooner mean? Probably sometime after Labor Day, but not too far after. We need to know whether or not we have a chance to get to a January Town Meeting or not, and collectively, there's a lot of political process in there, and we need to work together to try and get there. And we will engage our resources to be as helpful as we can, to study as many of those issues as we can, as quickly as we can through that process. We have a pretty well-baked traffic study that we haven't shared with people yet, but we're prepared to do so, and we've done some other things as well. The last thing I would ask, I would indicate, is that there has been some fairly slanderous presentations or discussions, postings on Facebook and other public media about the Falcone family, their business ethics, their personal ethics, and otherwise. And I would ask people in this community to rise above that, to think twice before you post. Take the personal out of it, keep it professional, and let's move forward and try to reach a good outcome for the benefit of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Anyone else for citizen speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item four on the agenda, which is Traffic Mitigation Committee. So I will lead off on this, because this was kind of my idea, and I'm not sure if everyone received the proposal. I think it was circulated not till Sunday, because we actually didn't know about the agenda, whether this would be on the agenda until Sunday, so I'm going to pass this around for discussion. If you could give Emily a copy, and then maybe give, if you could give Emily a copy. So I'll kick off on this. I don't, I wouldn't typically kick off, but since it's my proposal, I will kick off. So the idea here is to get together a group of stakeholders in town and knowledgeable persons in town to try to explore ways to improve automobile traffic in town, and to work with the Traffic Commission in the Board of Selectmen, and to make recommendations on how we might be able to improve traffic in town. This may include, seems to me it would be, it would be up to the committee to decide, but it may include seeking funds for a consultant or an expert to review opportunities for that, but I think it's an important issue. It's something that affects just about everyone in town, just about every day in town, regardless of where you live and how you live. Most everyone is affected one way or the other by the automobile traffic and the explosion of automobile traffic that we've seen in town over the last few years. There is likely not a panacea to all of this, in my view, but it doesn't mean we can't try, and it doesn't mean there aren't ideas that can be generated and that other communities are looking into as well. So that's the genesis of this, and that's the reason for it. And, you know, I've proposed a charge along those lines, and the charge, I'll just read for the purposes of the television audience, because I don't know that we have it on the screen. "The establishment of Traffic Mitigation Advisory Committee, the Board of Selectmen, whose charge is, one, to explore opportunities for lessening, mitigating, and calming the effects of automobile traffic on public ways located within the town of Milton; two, to report to the Traffic Commission and to the Board of Selectmen on the results of its work at least once each calendar quarter; and, three, to make recommendations based on the results of such work for consideration of the Traffic Commission and the Board of Selectmen." And the proposal includes a proposed membership, which would be seven members appointed by the Board of Selectmen. One would be the Chief of the Police and/or his designee. One would be the Director of Public Works or his designee. One would be the Chair of the Planning Board or her designee. One would be the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee or her designee. One would be a member of the Board of Selectmen, and then we would have two residents of the town of Milton, and I think that equals seven, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yes, that does equal seven, in fact. So that's the idea, and with that intro, who would like to be heard, if anyone?
We collectively decide as a group who the two residents of the town are?
Yeah, we would appoint. We would appoint all of the members of the committee. We would, you know, decide to establish a committee, establish a charge for the committee so they have something that, so they know what they're doing, and then we would vote on what the membership would be.
And they would report to the Traffic Commission and us?
That's what, I think it makes sense to vote, I'm sorry, Tony, I didn't mean to-
No, 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 I just didn't know if, because you said the Traffic Commission and the Board of Selectmen, so I didn't know, you know, I know this is in its beginning stages, but if it would report up, and then the Commission reports to us, or they report simultaneously, or?
So it's our, if it's our committee, I think they should report to us.
Okay.
But I think it's also important to bring in the Traffic Commission. My understanding of the Traffic Commission, and this comes from, I talked to Chief King about this, is that it's a little bit more of a reactive body. They respond to issues and issues that the residents have, and singular issues within town. They don't have, they don't take a holistic view of traffic within town, and while there may be recommendations that they need to sign off on and that they need to review, it's really not their role to kind of take that holistic view. So I think, I think it's important to bring the Traffic Commission into this process, because I think there probably will be things that they'd have to, that they should sign off on.
Yeah.
But I think because this committee would be a committee charged by our Board, ultimately they would be answerable to our Board. That's the idea.
Sure.
So you said you spoke with Chief King. Have you spoken with some other of the groups that are there?
Yeah, I talked to Cheryl Taguayis from the Planning Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the same person, but, you know, but the idea is that all of these people may not be on the committee, but they'd have a designee. And she was, this was a few weeks back, but at that time, she was, she was in favor of, you know, having some input into this, and she thought it was important that because of the issues that they see most every day have traffic impact, she thought that both of those committees should have representation. It would be helpful if they had representation on this. I haven't talked to the Director of Public Works, but I think it makes good sense to have, have the representation of that department here. That's the, that was the idea.
So would the idea be that this group would, this committee would provide ideas that are more in the nature of proactive planning, rather than what the Traffic Commission does? As you said, it's more reactive. So this committee might bring ideas to the Traffic Commission to explore with a more technical expertise?
I think that's right. You bring ideas both to the Traffic Commission and us. I think there are, I think there are, there might be, and again, I'm no expert, right? But there may be kind of holistic views about whether, for example, they may decide that it's important to hire a consultant or lease a software, right, or license a software that can review traffic in town and look for opportunities, right? And in that case, they would come to us, I think. If there are specific streets and specific issues that they would try to change, then I think they would first go to the Traffic Commission, and the Traffic Commission would come to us. So that's the idea, Katie, really, it is to be proactive on this and to take a holistic view of the town, because I think, and again, I'm no expert, but I think sometimes when we try to, when we try to fix one area, we spring a leak in another area, right? And so, in terms of traffic, and so, so to kind of, and I think there is software out there that can kind of take a look at it and see what opportunities there may be to improve things. And as I said, I don't think there's any panacea, but if we can, if we can improve it a little bit, I think, I think it would be helpful. And, you know, I'll say, I've said before, you know, I know there's, there's one community out in California that is negotiating with Waze, Waze, which is the, the traffic app that sends people to where the fastest route, and they're negotiating with Waze. I know there are communities in Massachusetts and in New Jersey who have resident-only streets, question about the legality of that, but, but they're looking into that. So I think there's a lot of things that, or few things anyway, and perhaps a lot of things, that committee like this could look into to try to make recommendations on, on how to make some improvements in town on this.
Well, based on that, I mean, it sounds to me as though the concern I had a few weeks ago that it might be duplicative of the Traffic Commission's work, and I think, Tony, you spoke to this also, is really not going to be the case, that this committee's going to be focused more on proactive planning, rather than specific requests from neighborhoods for a stop sign or a traffic light, or some other, a crosswalk, some other measure in their neighborhood. So my sense is that it probably makes sense to give this a try and see, see if this committee can make some progress.
And I tried, Katie, to capture it on the charge, to talk about exploring opportunities for lessening the effects of traffic in the town, and then, and then beyond that, it's the reporting and recommendation charge. So that was the idea.
Charge sounds reasonable to me.
So, Tony, Melinda?
So a few weeks ago, not last meeting, but the meeting before, I think, an issue came up with the radar speed monitor or some, the stop sign, the accident issue at the intersection of Canton and School. And so I got a better understanding of what the Traffic Commission was established and formed to do. So I do agree with Katie's point that provided that this is more of a proactive, kind of an overall approach, as opposed to a proactive, as opposed to a reactive. You know, I think that makes sense. One suggestion I might have for, let's see, number two, you know, Director of Public Works or his designee, there was a gentleman, Mike, if you can help me out, in the Engineering Department, I don't know if it was Alan Bishop, but somebody else, who was very familiar with reports that were written by Mast D O T.
John Thompson.
Yes. I would suggest that he be a member of this, because he seems to have a pretty good handle on this, and I think he could bring a lot of expertise to the subject matter. So that might be a good designee on behalf of Chase. But it sounds good. I'm in support of it.
Okay.
It may be totally unnecessary, but I'm wondering, listening to you talk about the holistic approach and the proactive approach, if those things need to be captured, because, and it may not need to be now. I mean, I think we understand the intention. I would just, I'm just looking forward to a time when maybe it's been going for five years. I don't want to say 10 years, because I'm hoping things are better. That's my, that's my, my only thought, but I don't know that it's necessary, you know, it's necessary to capture it in language. But I agree, I think it's a worthy thing and something that's needed.
So I'll make this suggestion. Since the Chair isn't here, and the Chair has a lot of experience in this, having been the Chief and having been on the Traffic Commission, you know, perhaps we'll defer this, you know, for further discussion and perhaps a vote, because I think, I think it would make sense to have, have the Chair weigh in on this, so.
Sir Acting Chair, can I just ask the Town Administrator's thoughts on this, because the Town Administrator also finds himself dealing with traffic issues and radar signs and all of these issues pretty frequently?
Yeah, it, it sounds like a very good idea to be that proactive planner piece. I think the one part of the charge that needs to be addressed is a regional approach. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is working on some traffic studies down in the Milton Village, and in order to do that, they've asked me to reach out to my counterparts at Boston Transportation Department and fix the signalization as you run all the way through Adam Street. Same thing in Quincy, same thing in Canton, same thing in Matapan, anywhere that I think our town touches another municipality. I think having a regionalization of this committee will help, because same thing with that, you know, the Chief always talks about the toothpaste, and you squeeze it, it's going to come out somewhere. That's what's happening in Quincy, and they end up in Milton. That's what's happening in Canton, and they end up in Milton. And maybe even a Mast D O T or a D C R rep that, not necessarily that is on the committee, but spends time so that we look at this from a more regional approach. There's not too many days that go by that people aren't talking about traffic and calming, and obviously, the days and weekends when school is not in session is a little easier, but we know that as soon as Labor Day gets here, if this committee could be formed and address this, but I would stress that regionalization approach, and not to forget all of our neighbors to the north, south, west, and east, and use them as partners.
And just to follow up on that, so I think we would have to have the Town Administrator, if not be a member of the committee, and I'm not suggesting that because you're already on, you know, there's already enough committee meetings that the Town Administrator has to go to, but at least to be involved in the process, or be aware of what's going on, or to be consulted by the committee, something along those lines.
So, so I think, I think both, I think both of those are great ideas. The second one, I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to put that into practice, if we don't, if Mike's not a member of the committee.
Maybe he would like to be a member of the committee, or maybe you've got, I'm just, I wasn't trying to volunteer in front of the committee.
No, I know, yeah, certainly.
But I, but I think his involvement would be needed.
Yeah.
Whether it's as a member or in some other way. That's all I was trying to suggest.
No.
Not trying to volunteer, Mike, but something else.
Certainly, certainly jump on board.
So does it make sense to, to make one of the members, rather than the Director of Public Works, or his or her designee, the Town Administrator, or his or her designee, and then, you know, and then Mike would be in the position of going to certain meetings or sending John Thompson to certain meetings? Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. I could also foster that relationship and bring in Quincy's planner and Quincy's transportation expert, or reach out to Commissioner Fee and Doctor in Boston and, you know, best practices type thing, or just literally stuff where we're touching an intersection that they share, so. I'd be happy to do that.
So, so on the first point, so that addresses Katie's point. On the first point, Mike, to address, I just dotted down a few things on the regional approach. What we could do is add to the charge under Romanat I to explore opportunities for lessening, mitigating, and calming the effects of automobile traffic on public ways located within the town of Milton, comma, including but not limited to the potential for, I mean, including but not limited to the potential for regional approaches. And so we kind of highlight that possibility, so we could add that to the charge, just to make sure that that's, that's-
We're one of not too many communities with an expressway running through the middle of our largest business district, and D C R roads touching us all around, so I think that would help.
That takes care of the holistic approach.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. Okay, so unless anyone disagrees with the approach of tabling this until we, hopefully the next meeting, or whenever we can fit it in the agenda, getting some feedback from the Chair on this, and then hopefully we'll tee it up for a vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving on, that's Agenda Item Five. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, which is the discussion approval, or, I'm sorry, approval, October 2018 Special Town Meeting Warrant Closing Date. And the date of the warrant closing has been suggested for August 6, August 6, 2018 at 5:00 PM as the closing date for the 2018 Special Town Meeting Warrant. So any discussion of this Agenda Item?
I had a, I don't know whether it's a question or a comment, but I know, I saw this date, it was in the paper, August 6, and it usually is early August that we close the warrant. If we're not meeting until the 13th, so that that's really a week between the time that all the articles would have to be in.
Last week you would ask for a week ahead of time also. Like it's kind of moved back and forth to be like the day of the meeting or the week prior.
Yeah, all I'm thinking of is, right, so our meeting dates right now are, the next one's July 23, and then the warrant would, if it closes on the 6th, that really only gives us one more meeting to finalize what articles we want to bring. So if we were to extend it to the 13th, we could at least finish up our piece of it. I mean, I suppose the other alternative is to, would be to keep it the 6th, but to, so long as we had a discussion, we had an idea of what the universe of articles was, if we need to finalize our language on the 13th, we could probably do that. For the October, you're right, Emily, I'm glad you reminded me of that. For the, for the, obviously for the May time, I mean, there's a lot of articles. For the October one, and the only ones I know so far are the two library articles, and then some that we may be talking about tonight and at the next meeting. So I don't know if there are other articles that anyone else is planning on bringing forward.
Couple of questions about citizens petition. A couple of people have reached out. I know Deb Befelton and Webb Collins had mentioned a Stonemont article potentially.
All right, yeah, okay.
And Sarah Callahan had spoken possibly about a citizens petition for fall time.
As far as I know, the Planning Board is kind of indicating that they might be looking more at the winter than at October. Well, maybe it makes sense to keep it the 6th to, particularly for citizens petition, since that date's already been noticed in the newspaper, so that we could then finalize any articles we have on the 13th. So long as we've had a discussion about them on the 23rd, that probably should cover us.
Is there any downside to the 13th, to making it the 13th? Is there any downside to that?
We have published the 6th, I think, right? No?
I haven't had it posted yet. No, it might have been in an article, but it hasn't been published.
I think it was just an article, yeah.
Hopefully, since it was, it was published as the 6th before, maybe if we, if we, if we have a motion to change it to the 13th, maybe it'll be advertised again.
Let me ask, Emily, is there any downside to changing it to 13th, Emily, in terms of you and whoever you're working with to get the articles ready so they could go to the Warrant Committee? I know your timeline had the articles, I think, go into the Warrant Committee the next day, which is normal, which would make sense, because they have a limited time to deal with these for October.
I mean, generally, it's just the first meeting in August, they're approved for inclusion, but it's just kind of like a moving line as to if you want the week's heads-up to review them before they go for a vote, or if you want to give people kind of for a last minute.
We could, oh, pardon me, go ahead. I was just going to say, we could certainly, we could do it serially, and we don't have to, we don't have to, you know, kind of wait until the 13th. We could kind of take action along the way, and then, this would be leaving ourselves, leaving ourselves an extra meeting, if anything, if we don't finish anything. So it seems to me we could probably telegraph to the Warrant Committee, we'll use the ones, and we could vote them along the way, rather than waiting to vote them all at once. Is that possible?
I think we could let the Warrant Committee know as a coming attraction, this is what's, this is what's already been submitted, this is what's in the works, so they have a little bit of lead time.
Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm rather indifferent then, at this point, whether we'd make it August 6th or August 13th. I know it's been proposed for August 6th, which would give a week to, for all the articles to be assembled. I just don't want to preclude us from having the ability to finalize an article on the 13th.
That's what, that's what I'm concerned about as well.
Because we always start at the beginning, the summer thing, we have so much time to get ready for October, and then the summer runs out so quickly, and we're up against the deadline, and this happens every year.
Well, then let's go with the 13th.
That's my impression. Melinda, any?
No, I, I agree. It would be good to give people extra time, and also, we might be able to address what we already have. And any other questions I have are technical about who works on making sure that the articles are in the shape they need to be to pass on to the Warrant Committee.
Well, Emily does a lot of the work on that.
Right, so I'll speak with Emily on that.
All right, so do we want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve Monday, August 13, 2018, at 5:00 PM as the closing date for the October 2018 Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Special Town Meeting.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous, 4-0.
And hopefully, if any, can I just add, for anyone watching, if any citizens are planning on submitting a citizens petition, they should give us a Word document, as well as a PDF, or an actual paper, signed copy, because the Word document is what's needed in order to get it into the warrant.
Right.
And for a special town meeting, they need 100 signatures, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so that's Item Six. Moving on to Item Seven, which is a discussion, and that's a nice segue, because this is a discussion of the October 2018 Special Town Meeting articles. In parentheses, "Plastic Bag Ban, Retired Police Officer Work Detail, and Other Potential Board of Selectmen Sponsored Town Meeting Articles." That's what's referenced in the, I believe, in the Agenda Item. So first one mentioned is the plastic bag ban, so maybe, Katie, I know that that's one that you've been interested in. Do you want to kick that off?
Sure. And maybe the Town Administrator and I can cover this together. We, I thought Hillary Wade, who's our environmental coordinator, is that her title?
Yes.
She's been doing a lot of research on this, and, but is not able to be here tonight. So we mentioned this at a meeting a few weeks ago as a possible fall time meeting warrant article. I think everybody knows- I think everybody knows that a lot of communities are starting to ban plastic bags, and these are the one-time bags that you get at a grocery store, or a CVS, or any kind of, or sometimes at restaurants with take-home items. They're the thin plastic bags that only get used one time, and they tend to find their way into trees and into the ocean, and they create a lot of problems. They jam some recycling machinery, they don't biodegrade, and they can live for hundreds of years in a landfill, which is not good for the environment. So, they can, but they're also on eyesore, and they affect quality of life in the town by the town looking messy if paper bag, or, not paper, plastic bags are blowing around in the wind and getting into the trees. So, a lot of towns have, and cities, have already begun imposing bans on plastic bags, and, I think there's about 80 that have already done this, so we're not, we're not in front of the pack by any means here, we're really following, if we were to move forward on this, we'd be following the work that a lot of other communities are doing. Boston recently put this into place, and we had, so we had a meeting recently, the town administrator and Hillary Waite, and Chair Wells and I had a meeting where we talked a little bit about some of the research that Hillary's been working on, and Mike was good enough to get one of the Boston City Councilors on the phone, so we talked with him, it was Matt O'Malley.
Councilor Matt O'Malley, yeah, who's the sponsor of the bill.
So, we talked, he told us a little bit about the process in Boston, and of course, our process is different, being a town, but same substantive concept behind the idea of imposing a ban on stores having plastic bags. I know that, when I talked with the chair, he did reach out to the owner of the Fruit Center marketplace and kind of let them know that this is something that we're thinking about, we may be bringing this to town meeting, and what Richard told me was that it wasn't a surprise, and that their only concern would be timing, that there'd be enough time to allow this to go into place, which, we circulated some of the bylaws that have been adopted in other towns, and usually, there's been a period of time, an effective date later on, whether it's, a lot of communities did the six months after the Attorney General approves the bylaw, or they picked a certain date, and sometimes if they were a community that had a lot of businesses in it, which we are not, they had kind of a two-tiered system where there was a shorter period of time for large businesses, but a longer implementation period for smaller businesses, for whom it might be more of a burden. So, those are some of the issues that surround, another one of the issues really is kind of what composition of bags, there's some different technical terms here, 2.5 or 4.0 mils, which I guess is, each mil is 1 one-thousandth of an inch, so that just talks about how thin the bag is. A lot of communities are doing four mils, so a little bit, bags are a little bit, still thin bags, but a little bit thicker than the 2.5 mil bags that some communities have banned. There's also some issues in the different towns about who should enforce this, and a lot of them have picked the health department, which was a little bit surprising to me, but some of them DPW, others police, some of them the town administrator, or the town administrator's designee. So, those are some of the issues that are, that have been raised. A lot of the bans look pretty similar, when you start reading a lot of different towns, you see there's a lot of commonality among the language, so I think a lot of them are borrowing from each other, and that's probably something that, if we wanted to move this forward, we should probably come up with a draft that's based on what some of the other towns have done, and have a further discussion about it. So, I wanted to put it forward to see what the sense of the board was in terms of putting this forward to the October town meeting.
Well, first, I just want to do something Hillary Waite asked of us, which was to let residents know that plastic bags are not recyclable, they're not to go into single-stream recycling or any recycling, you need to take them back to the store, so please, everyone do that.
That's true, and there's been a group up at Winter Valley that actually has taken the plastic bags and has made mats for the homeless out of them, and I think it takes hundreds of bags to make the mats, so I used to bring my, because I'm one of the worst offenders, so I used to bring my plastic bags up to Winter Valley and drop them off so that they could be made into the mats, but I think they have a hold on taking them now, because they've gotten so many from people in town.
Right.
So.
Any other thoughts on the plastic bag ban?
I read the material that you circulated via email, and I thought it was very well done, it was very thorough, it was very well presented, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, one thing I've learned, having been elected, is we're a leader, I think, in this category of, you know, being a green community, eco-friendly, and, you know, I want to support anything that perpetuates that. I think that, you know, from a practical standpoint, anything we can do to remove these plastic bags from the slipstream where they can get into our stormwater systems, I think is huge, particularly given the fact we had that issue on Christopher in California, and that flooding, and, you know, there were a couple of pictures that went around town of all of the plastic bags that were caught in that...
Storm drain.
Yeah, the storm drain. So, you know, putting a ban on these bags isn't going to eliminate them, I think we all know that, but anything we can do to lessen it, I think, is a step in the right direction, so, you know, I think it's great. There was a frequently asked question section, Katie, in that material that you circulated, which I thought was great, and if we can make that public, because I know a lot of people, particularly business owners, are going to have some questions.
Was that the Arlington one, Tony?
I believe so. It was the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I think that was Arlington, Charis North sent us Arlington.
I think that was in one of the slides, and, you know, Mike McNoce down at the Fruit Center, you know, as you said, for him, he was expecting this, but, you know, the Tedeskes and the 7-Elevens and some of those smaller ones, that aren't typically in the habit of offering paper as an alternative, they're probably going to have some questions too, so. I think it's great.
So, in terms of teeing this up, it seems to me we'll have to have an article drafted, perhaps by the next meeting, that'd probably be useful, and, you know, maybe we can get it on the agenda for next meeting to review and hopefully approve.
I'm happy to take a stab at coming up with a draft and circulating it. Charis North, who's one of our attorneys, she's the one who sent us a lot of these other communities, as well as Hillary. I think Charis's email said that Arlington was a pretty common model, so I think just some of the ideas that we would need to be thinking about is, do we want to go with 4.0 mils, the highest amount, which some communities have done, or do we want a lower amount? Who should enforce it? So, those are the sorts of things that, you know, maybe we can even put in as placeholders in a draft, and then either discuss it again a little further here, or take it back up on the 23rd. We may also want to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and let them know that we're thinking about this and looking at bringing it to town meeting in October, so that they can communicate it to all of their members.
I wanted to mention, one of the things that I thought was a good practice to emulate was going out and getting support, and being able to have people as partners, businesses are our partners, and so to get them on board ahead of time, and talking to the Chamber of Commerce, I think, is a great first step with that, and also getting their input about, well, where will the difficulties lie, and what can we do to mitigate those? That may provide some guidance, too. So, I don't know who does that, but...
Councilor O'Malley did mention that it is the way of the world now that some of the elected officials promote bags that are not recyclable and can wear and tear, like your IKEA bags and stuff like that, and we're seen as, you know, almost campaign, the old nail file bumper sticker type stuff, where you put your name on it, and that's what people use when they go shopping.
I collected a few of them at Celebrate Milton the last few years from, the real estate brokers have been giving them out and others, so.
Well, I think it's important that we do something around making sure that people do have bags, especially certain people for whom this might be a bit difficult in the beginning.
So, if I could suggest, Mike, would you mind reaching out to Daryl Elliott, the head of the Chamber, tell him we're considering this, and then maybe we can, as soon as we have a draft article, we can surface it with the Chamber, and just so they're kept up to speed on this. And are there any other stakeholders that we can think of that we'd want to make sure, and obviously, the business community and the Fruit Center, we should make sure that they're kept up to speed on this as we move forward? Any other stakeholders that we can think of that we should reach out to? I don't want to put people on the spot, but...
Well, perhaps this is not a correct assumption, but I...
Read.
In looking at the material, which was great, thank you, I thought that this board would think it important to make sure that there are some exemptions, such as dry cleaning bags, but I don't know if that's true, but I think that it's important to also let people know what those are. I can't think of other entities that would need to know.
Some of, I agree with that, some of the other exemptions were for newspaper bags, the dry cleaning bags that Melinda mentioned, fish or produce at the store, so that there could still be, it wouldn't be a bag with handles, but it would still be a plastic bag for, either for food that's wet, or, you know, in the nature of produce, that you'd want to have that in a plastic bag rather than a paper bag to separate it from other items, so a lot of communities have exempted those. Yeah, I can't think of any other groups that we would have to reach out to, either some of the bylaws specifically exempt, say, a religious organization or a nonprofit that's having a special fundraiser, or a bazaar, or a festival from using plastic bags, and others do it indirectly by just having their bylaw applied to a store, rather than anything else.
How does the farmer's market handle?
Well, they do actually often have single-use bags, and they also encourage people to bring their own bags.
That's a good point, we should probably notify the farmer's market president.
That's Jean, right?
Yeah.
Jean Boylan. So, Mike, if you could reach out to Jean, make sure he's up to speed as we move forward on this. All right, so we'll plan to have that teed up for next time with a draft, and maybe some feedback from some of the stakeholders on this as well. The next one, if we're all set, anything further on that one?
I'm excited.
The next one we have written here is the retired police officer detail work, and maybe Mike, Mike, are you in a position to give us a little bit of a...
Sure, yeah, so I spoke to Chief King, it's been an ongoing discussion, a lot of communities are doing this, there are multiple ways to do this, you can do it through a home rule petition, I've done some research, the town of Essex, Massachusetts did it as a town meeting article and a bylaw, and then there are specifics, which I would defer to the chief of police as to how it works. Too many times in this town, there's either an unfilled detail, which is unsafe for both the pedestrian vehicle or bicycle traffic in town. The work that police details do on these job sites is amazing, or we have to pull from another municipality around, you'll see, just last week, we had so much work going on in the town, they were unable to fill the Vizzella project, the Adams Street water main repair, and there was a representative from Randolph that was guiding traffic. Not that that is a bad police officer, but our own police officers know the area much better, what to look for, how to divert traffic. So, it would be along those lines, and then I think where the chief would come in is, what are the limitations on it? Is it a retired Milton police officer, retired Milton police officer living, still living in town, or any police officer that's retired that's living in town? As we get through the article, I'd like to discuss, bring the chief in to talk about specifics on how it's done, but he said the safest route to do it is through a town meeting article and a bylaw. Feels that the time is right, a lot of municipalities in the state have already adopted this policy.
So, Mike, would the chief be the one who would be taking the laboring war in terms of drafting an article?
Yes.
He would? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I'll have him prep it for this board, but just as a preliminary discussion tonight, we figured we'd get it on the agenda. There are...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, there are a good few retired police officers living in town that could supplement the workforce that we have on the street.
And is that something that we could have teed up for the 23rd?
Yes.
Again, with the idea that we need to move forward on these, so.
Comfortable, we could.
So, is that something we'd have the chief come in on the 23rd for to present?
Yeah.
Could I just speak to that? One of the police officers reached out to me on this article, and I think it's a good idea, so I, for the reasons Mike stated, I'm hoping we'll push this forward. I don't know whether we need to get a consensus of everyone tonight, but I support us moving forward with trying to make sure that the retired Milton police officers can do details. My understanding is that the current officers would have the first choice, and then it's only if a current police officer can't do, fill a detail, then it would go to the retirees.
Correct, yeah, I should have made that clear, it's unfilled details.
Anyone else? Melinda?
I'm looking forward to seeing the language, I think it's a very good idea, and we're lucky that we have that option.
Anything else on this? Tony?
It's a great idea.
Yep, I agree, I think the concept is a good one, and interested in seeing it in writing and hearing the presentation. And then the other item that's listed here is other potential Board of Selectmen sponsored town meeting articles. So, we can open that up for discussion. Does anyone else have something to add on that?
I don't have anything else for October.
So, I have the one that I submitted back last March to the board at the time, and perhaps Tony and Melinda don't have a copy of that, and that's to an article, a drafted article, to use gender-neutral language and to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, so my hope is to have that teed up as well, and my hope is to get that on the agenda and have that teed up as well. I would, you know, I would submit the same language, and I'd actually ask Mike if you still have that, just to circulate it to Tony and Melinda, so they have that, and I'll certainly be available, if we get on the agenda, to make a presentation on that, short presentation on that. And that's, you know, I won't go into detail now on it, but I will point out that, similar to the plastic bag ban, we are no sense leading the way on this, there's more than 40 communities have been, have made this or a similar change, and so it's something where we certainly wouldn't be leading, but we would be following the trend on that, so. And the language that we used is very similar, the language that I presented was very similar to the language that we used and passed by Brookline to amend their bylaws last October. And since then, there have been other towns that have amended their bylaws in a similar fashion, so, anyway, so I, you know, if I get on, if we have the opportunity, we'll make a short presentation on that as well. Anything else on October 2018 special town meeting articles? Going once, going twice, sold.
Right.
On to Item 8, discussion approval of the social media policy boards and committees. Tony, I meant to mention this to you beforehand, and I didn't, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure, I'm happy to. Thank you for including the entire thing in all of its revised glory. I know it's somewhat awkward to read when it is in this kind of redlined, technically speaking, blue-lined state, but this is a jumping off point. Mike and I worked on this together as part of the Policy Committee, Mike Zulus and I, and I think the consensus was that, similar to the article that you're about to write, Katie, on the plastic bag, that the town of Easton had a pretty good one, and that's what I used for this, as a stepping off point. I made some revisions to it, clearly. As you can see, it's about six pages, it is by no means perfect. I think as policies go, this one's going to be the one that will be the most fluid out of the ones that we have, simply because social media is constantly, constantly changing, but it's something that we can use as a stepping off point. I did make a notation on page four, well, page seven, rather. There's some language there that I don't love, I worked something up, I don't love that language, I mean, feel free to revise and edit as you see fit throughout the document, but I'm actually, that's a cry for help, if you will, in that particular clause, I just don't like it, I was kind of pressed for time, and that's what I came up with. Everyone's probably going to have their slant, their take on this. Again, it's, let's try to incorporate as much as we can, but at the same time, be mindful of the fact we don't want it to become unwieldy and so lengthy that it becomes a document, really, that no one will read, because the idea is, of course, that people are going to be reading this, they're going to, hopefully, refer to it, refer back to it, and that all new employees, as they become hired by the town, will sign off on this, they'll sign their name to it once they become employed. And I did include a clause at the beginning specifically mentioning who it does not apply to, which is town meeting members, it's not going to... It's not going to apply to all, all the town meeting members. I think that that's just not practical, so. Fire away.
Could you say what it was you didn't, if you, if you can, about the language on page seven? Because I, I wanted to take a stab at providing something and I thought, well, I may go in the wrong direction, so.
So, I just think it's, it's a little complicated, the enforcement of this. And I think that that question has come up and will probably come up again. And it's, it's a gray area in terms of when, it's so subjective, I think, to the, to everyone when a violation has occurred. So, anything we can do to sharpen that language, because to me, it's a little vague.
Right.
You know, as a board, how do we, what's the process? What's the procedure of enforcing it?
Right. And it almost sounds like a criteria issue. Like, how do we know when there's been a violation? Is that almost what you're, where?
Yeah, well, exactly. It's so subjective. What might be a violation to you could not be a violation to me. And so, anything we can do to tighten that or sharpen it, I think, would be helpful.
Tony, on that language, I, I thought restoring the first part of the sentence you took out, well, the first of the two sentences you took out that says violation of this policy may constitute good cause for removal of appointed officials, and then just put a period there and take out under the town charter. So, I haven't gone back to see whether the town charter says anything about that. But I, I think if you restored that sentence, at least for the appointed boards.
Uh huh.
That makes sense. I didn't know whether you took that out based on some of the comments I made at the last meeting about the recall. So, I'm glad you took that out, but I thought for appointed officials.
Okay.
It made sense to, to leave that in, that removal would be.
Right.
Would be a way of enforcing it. The, the more challenging issue is how do you enforce it against an elected board or an elected official, but.
Okay.
But I think for an appointed board.
I think I had a problem with town charter and that was the red flag for me, that, that jumped off the page and I said, I don't want to go near town charter. So, that's why I removed it. But I see your point, your suggestion, if we just, that sentence standing alone, if you remove the clause under the town charter. It's strong language, may, you know, may constitute, that gives us an out, that's fine. It just, it struck me as a little strong, but I'm happy to include it and put it back in. You're right. It becomes a lot more problematic when you're referring to electeds as opposed to appointeds. It needs to have some teeth. There's no question. It's got to have teeth or else it, it, there's no point to it. So, what I don't want to have happen is have our Board of Selectmen meetings turn into hour-long discussions about what constitutes a violation. That's my biggest fear, so.
Right.
That's the, that's the fine line that we're walking, to give this some teeth, to identify when a violation has occurred. How do we enforce that but not have it turn into a free-for-all three-hour discussion?
Right.
Melinda?
So, it's, I, I think this sentence that talks about conduct that arises to the level of a violation, there, that's actually a strength, even though it's a bit cumbersome. Because it, it speaks to the circumstances of a particular case and I think that we need to be able to do that. It's also its weakness because there's no criteria there. However, I think what we might look at are outcomes that would be detrimental to the town. And if we can, as, as everyone knows, I'm very new to this, but if we could identify perhaps the outcomes, which I think actually, there, there may be some of that earlier in here, that, that's what we look at. In this case, did this happen? Was, was the, were residents trust and faith in the, the governance of the town compromised in any way? Or did it lead to litigation that, that shouldn't have happened? Or, you know, something, I'm not a lawyer. But, but I think if we can define some of the outcomes that, that are, that would be red flags at least, I don't want to, to say are absolutely prohibited, but I, I think if we, if we could look at outcomes, that might be a clue. I don't know, I could be wrong, but that's, that's what I would look at in writing policy for a case like this.
Well, one thing that I was hoping to solicit tonight were some examples from people. I didn't have time to come up with good examples, although I would like to insert a couple. I did make a reference on page five, number nine, you know, examples of conflict of interest are. So, to the extent that anyone has a real-life scenario that they've observed or that they can come up with a hypothetical, what I've found is that as a reader, once we make this available to people, they're all going to say, oh, this is great, this is wonderful, this is theoretical. If you can provide some examples of what it is and what it isn't, it, it makes, it, I feel like it resonates with the reader a lot better. And so, my intention was to include some examples. I didn't get to that, but if we could add some, I think that that would make the, I think it would make the document stronger.
Does anyone know if there's an organization that does some education around something like this? I really appreciated going through the, the open meeting law and, and the, the online resource, but sometimes we can find, we can find online trainings on things that might actually do what you were talking about.
So, Mike and I talked about this. I think, if I'm wrong, just tell me, but I think the question you're asking is like, for example, would the MMA have a template of a policy?
No, I, I was thinking to add to, no, 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 not at all. I'm not being clear. So, I was thinking, and because you're right, illustrations are great for people. It's vignettes work, examples work, but to be able to say, okay, here's our policy and backing up our policy is this video that you also have to, you know, like a mini-training or something and then sign off on. I don't know if that's too overboard for social media policy or, or not. That, that was my only, I, I don't know if it, if people need illustrations, what kind of illustrations they may need, that's all. Social media seems very confusing for people.
So, I guess we can look into that to see whether, it, it may, it strikes me that it may be cumbersome, but, but it may be very useful.
And that's not what you asked for.
But I think it's a great idea, even if it's something you could email and have someone sign off on as a way to, you know, if we can figure out, okay, here's, for all new employees that come on, here's our policy, here's a 10-minute tutorial, watch this and then we have them sign off on it. I, I think, yeah, that's a good suggestion.
All right. So, we, we can look into that, certainly. In terms of having objective standards, I think the effort is in section E to try to set some kind of objective standards. They're not, they're not all particularly objective. Some of them are a little more objective than others in terms of violations, but I think that's the effort there. The only thing that I would suggest on examples is sometimes when you include examples, then you exclude everything other than the examples.
Yeah.
In terms of enforcement.
Sure.
So, people will say, well, people could say, well, I didn't, I didn't, this wasn't listed, so, so I didn't know it was, I didn't, I didn't know it was wrong to do. Now, that's, it's, I don't think that should, that should dictate us, dictate what we do necessarily, but it's something to be concerned about. Why don't we do this? If you want to, Melinda, do you, if you want to suggest some language on enforcement?
Okay.
If you want to suggest some language on enforcement, and then the policy subcommittee can take this up again, and then it seems to me we need to get town council to review this before we approve anything. So, why don't we get it to the point at Policy Subcommittee with Melinda's input and obviously any input from any other member? Why don't we get it to the point where we think, based on the input, we're at close to final and then get town council's view of it? Does that, does that make sense? Katie, you, did you have additional?
I have kind of a more fundamental question, which was that at the last meeting, we talked about this policy. I think the big question was, does it apply only to boards that, appointed boards that are under the Board of Select, appointed by the Board of Selectmen? Or does it also apply to moderator-appointed boards and committees? And does it apply to all the other independent elected boards? And I didn't know whether the Policy Committee had talked about that or talked to John Flynn about that.
We have, we have not, to my memory. Tony, you'll correct me, but I don't believe we have.
We haven't. We did ask town council to take a look at those three separate issues and he is looking into that.
Okay. So, he's looking at moderator-appointed boards and independent or non-selectment-appointed boards?
Right.
Okay. And, you know, to your point, Katie, seems to me if this is going to cover the moderator-appointed boards or other appointed boards, then we have other stakeholders that will want to weigh in on this.
Yes.
May want to weigh in on this.
Yeah, because it seems to me we wouldn't want to have sets, two different sets of standards where we have, all of a sudden, we have a social media policy that applies to committees that are, like the Historical Commission that are appointed by us, but they don't apply to the Warren Committee because they're appointed by the moderators. So, it seems that for the towns, boards and committees, there should really, if the policy's going to apply to one, it really should apply to all of them. But that, I guess we do need to vet that with town council to make sure that, that we can do that. And if not, maybe it's something that the moderator might want to think about creating for the boards he appoints.
Right, right. And it, it, yeah. And well, I guess we'll have to, we'll see where town council comes out on that.
I, I did have a couple of questions. Under section four, it says the town prohibits taking action against anyone for reporting a possible violation of this policy or for cooperating in an investigation. And I guess whenever I see something like that, I always wonder, well, how do we make sure this gets addressed? I mean, is this the grievance officers' purview or is it, I guess, I'm, I'm, I always look for a mechanism and I don't know that that's necessarily needed here, but it was, it was the question.
Yeah, so, 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 so I'll, I'll, I'll try. So, this is, you know, obviously anti-whistleblower provision. So, the question is, I don't know that we have an anti-whistleblower policy in town. We probably, I don't know that we do or we don't. So, so if we don't, as drafted, seems to me it would be a violation of this policy to do that, subject to the same enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so that begs the question if we, whether we have any other anti, any other whistleblower policy. But, but to my reading of this, if, if there were action taken against a whistleblower here, it would be a violation of the policy subject to the same enforcement.
Right. So, I guess my question is, who's enforcing it?
Well, I, I, I think this, I think as drafted, the Board of Selectmen would be enforcing it.
Just making sure. Okay. Thank you.
On that same point, on, on section 3D, we have a list of policies that were from the Easton draft. We probably have similar policies. We may call them different things or we may not have one particular of these policies that are listed. So, I think we need to check 3D as well and just see if there are other policies on those Generally, I think the Policy Committee's made some good progress with the draft and I hadn't even thought of the town meeting member issue when we had the last meeting, so. So, whether, if the decision is not to include them, I mean, it's at least good that we're thinking about that. Not just, not just the town-wide elected boards, but also the precinct elected officers.
It's the last, I know, I just don't want to go down that path, but.
All right. Anything else on this? So, I think, I think the, the, the program here is that Melinda will suggest some language and then we'll send it back to Policy Committee and then on to town council.
By when?
By when? Good question.
Give me a date.
Oh, well, I don't want to.
No, no, no. I'm asking you to.
Mike and I have to figure out when we're going to meet next month.
So, yeah, so we may, we, we've been trying to meet Monday's morning, so we may meet next Monday, possibly. So, if you could do it by then, maybe we can move it along.
So, if there are further comments, who should they go to?
They should go to Mike.
Mike, okay.
Just to make sure.
Yep, send to me.
All right. So, Melinda will send, try to send some comments by before next Monday morning. Policy will meet to consider and implement the comments that we've received here and then, to the extent we have it in shape, we'll get it to the town council and try to get this teed up, you know, for one of the meetings to come up. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the Good Energy Services Agreement, which is an agreement that we have seen before and has been presented to us before, I believe. And just to tee this up, we do have a, a, a letter from town council indicating that the agreement, and I think he indicated this to us when he was here a few weeks ago, that this agreement contains all the changes that he requested on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. So, so, so certainly town council has signed off on this draft and I, I think it was back in May that we first received it. So, anyway, so that's, that's, that's where we are on this and the proposal is to approve and sign this agreement with Good Energy, which is the energy aggregator who, which presented at town meeting back in, back in May. So, any discussion?
I'll make a motion. I'll move that we approve and sign a services agreement between the town of Milton and Good Energy LP.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right. Moving on to the discussion, the Milton Land Conservation Trust letters.
Be approval.
I'm sorry?
It should be approval.
Well, I think we can, I think, since, since we have the letters and I, I think we can probably, I think the, the agenda, the discussion of the letters could lead to the approval of the letters. So, we have received the letters that have been drafted and these letters are to thank John Cronin and Edward E. Wendell for their work on behalf of the Milton Land Conservation Trust. And maybe, Katie, could you, could you just describe what, what, what we're trying to do here?
Sure. A few weeks ago, we had, we accepted an assignment of some, I think one was a conveyance of land and the other was just assigning some conservation restrictions to us at different parts of town, including Randle Fav and Gun Hill Street, because the trust is winding down and we were told at the time, the trust has been in existence for 50 years and I know has done a lot of good work to try to preserve some open space for conservation purposes in town. So, the only point here is just as the, as the, as was noted in the letter when we received the conservation restrictions and the conveyance documents, the idea is just for the board to formally thank both Mr. Cronin and Mr. Wendell for all of their work with the trust over the years.
Any discussion, thoughts, comments? Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve and sign the letters of recognition for John A. Cronin and Edward E. Wendell for their work with the Milton Land Trust, uh, Land Conservation Trust.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Item 10, approval for a one-day liquor license. And this is for the plate, I believe.
First Parish.
First Parish Church.
Right.
So, oh, so, 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 so there's a reference to the plate in this. Is that, is that connected to the, or is it a separate?
No, the plate was going to submit an application, but they, they did not.
Okay.
That case came to dismiss, but there is a sep, separate one from the First Parish Church.
Got it. So, we're only moving on the First Parish Church one. All right. So, Mike, do you want to just tee this up very quickly or do you, do you know what this is?
Yeah, it's, it's just a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for a birthday potty. That's to be held.
All right. Any, any discussion? We have. We have a motion?
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the First Parish Church at 535 Canton Avenue for a birthday party to be held on Sunday, July 15, 2018, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. Item 12, this is a proposed motion to accept a council of aging donation from the Copeland Family Foundation. And we have in our packets a letter from the Copeland Family Foundation dated June 22, 2018, stating that the Board of Directors, this is addressed to Marian Sullivan, the Director of the Milton Council on Aging, stating that, Dear Ms. Sullivan, the Board of Directors of the Copeland Family Foundation voted at a meeting of the Board held on May 23, 2018, to grant $25,000 to the Milton Council on Aging to be used specifically for the support of the operation of the Council's vans. We wish you continued success. And so, in order to, in order to receive that money, the Board of Selectmen needs to accept the donation. Any comments, discussions, questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move the, oh, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, I move to accept a donation from the Copeland Family Foundation to the Council on Aging in the amount of $25,000 to be used specifically for the support of the operations of the Council's vans.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Tony?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Item 13, Boards and Committees Appointment Youth Task Force. So we have discussed on a couple of occasions, and we've had some input on a couple of occasions from the Milton Youth Advocates with respect to a youth task force or a youth committee of some kind. And there has been discussion of, of, of establishing a committee. We've seen some proposed charges, I think, in the materials that we've received, and we have received some, some applications by those who would like to serve on a youth task force. So maybe it makes sense for, Mike, if you want to tee this one up for us.
Sure. There was a late addition to the youth task force. I had been in communication with Caroline Contella about the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and making sure that that body has a voice on this youth task force. So in addition to the names that are listed on this motion in front of you tonight, I would like to add Dr. Susan Coke Weser, if I'm saying her name correctly, W-E-S-E-R, as the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, representative to this. I did have a conversation with Chair Wells, obviously, who is out of state and would like to look further into the charge more specifically, but, and for the sake of time, would love to get this committee appointment done and have the charge to work through, you know, by the end of the week, early next week, but just to get this task force in place tonight and work through the general specifics of the, of the charge. There was one submitted by Sarah Callahan. He didn't have enough time to review that and just would like to sit down and come up with, with some clarity on that through discussion. But obviously can't do that here tonight, so I think the idea was to proceed with the appointments tonight. Having, you can see from the list, a large contingent of town employees, including myself, and then, at least the objectives of, of the group, having some students involved, some parents that are involved in this capacity and have subject matter expertise, drawing on the wealth of talent that we have in the town, both from a, a youth perspective and an adult advocacy piece, and making sure that the town and groups like Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition have a voice at the table. And we really charge hard to get to our short-term goal, which is, you know, just as soon as school gets back after Labor Day. So we are under very time-sensitive, and we need to get this committee appointed and get rolling on it, so.
All right. So comments, thoughts? Melinda?
Just a question, as usual. Are the, oh, here they are. The applications that we got, are these all the people who applied?
There was one that I sent to you late today, which kind of fell through the cracks. We, it was, landed on Barbara's desk.
Right, right.
A pile of paper, and we didn't notice it until Christine Stanton had started today, so that's something that, that the task force can, can take a look at.
Take a look at later, but otherwise, these are the people who...
Yes.
I, I just wondered if we had 50 people apply, or we, or we had just, you know, what we have, which is great. I'm not saying that any number is, is not the right number. I just was wondering about the dynamic and how the process has been going. Thank you.
Katie?
The draft charge that we received from the Milton Youth Advocates has a membership composition that's different than the membership that's proposed in this motion. For instance, there's a library employee proposed in the dra, in the motion that's been presented to us, which is not included in the Milton Youth Advocates' proposed charge. But there's some others, I guess we're, all right, so the, the, the advocates proposed, I remember the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which now you're saying, Mike, would be added to this charge, which wasn't on the draft motion. So there's a little bit of inconsistency. Some of them, many of them are the same in terms of students, parents, but there are some differences in the two. And the question I had on the charge was that, it mentions 12 members. No, there's 10 listed. One of them says at least one who has youth experience, has a social experience as a social worker. So possibly there could be a couple more that are added to this to make it 12, but... So I guess if we were to, if we were to appoint people to the committee tonight, then we'd have to conform the charge to whom we, whom we appoint tonight.
Right, I had the same question.
Normally you'll point, normally you create the charge, you create the committee before you appoint people to it. Could we do, could we do all of that tonight?
Well, I can tell you my view on this. So, so I think the Chair has done a lot of work on this. I know he's had a lot of meetings, and so, so I, so I, I, well, I'd like to charge ahead, and, and I think it's fair to defer on that point to get his input. I think that's fair, given the amount of work that he's put into it so far. But it seems to me that we could establish the committee, appoint the members of the committee, subject to our, subject to our defining a charge at our next meeting. That's one way to go. The other way to go is we could establish the committee, establish a charge and membership, and then we could always change it. I would, I would say, given the, the work that the Chair has done on this, I think, I would defer on the charge if, if everyone's agreed until the next meeting, but that doesn't mean, in my view, we can't establish the committee. I know it's not the typical procedure. Typically, you want to say, this is our committee, this is the charge, and then you appoint the people to it, but in this circumstance, we do want to get going. We do have time pressure, and, but, but I think we want to give due consideration to the thoughts of the Chair on the charge. So that's, that's my view of it. Other thoughts, comments?
I'm fine with whichever you decide.
Well, we'll decide. We'll all decide.
I think, because, tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is there is at least broad agreement that we need to look at the short-term picture and, and get started on September. If we had no idea what needed to be done, I think that would give me pause, but I, I think we all agree that, that, that parameter is clear, and we will, perhaps we could define a date by which we will really look at the charge and, and decide what it is.
I think that makes good sense.
Yeah, I mean, I actually thought the charge that the Youth Advocates wrote was, was good. It's short and it's broad, but I thought it was fine. It does address the short-term needs, so I, I think that's, I'm happy to take that approach.
Right. Perhaps that could be the working charge. Is that possible?
I, I, to keep it clean, we could, we could certainly suggest that as a way to go, but to keep it clean, I would, I would say, let's wait until we have a definite charge to give the committee, because we don't want to, you know, kind of suggest one thing. So, so, so maybe what we do is we move to establish the committee, and we'll make this, the charge subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, and then we can, we can go about appointing some of these members. If everyone's agreed on that approach...
And then next meeting, we'll correlate which member corresponds to which, for lack of a better term, box to be checked off? Like, for example, I mean, we know Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator, but, you know, there's some names there that don't have a title after them, so I'm not sure which box that they're checking off.
Yeah, and I, and I think...
So we'll, we'll take care of that next meeting? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I think so, and we haven't, and we won't, in this meeting, create the boxes even. We will just appoint the people, they, most of them, I think, are included in these boxes, but we haven't really created, created these boxes yet, if we, if we're just establishing the committee. Again, part of this is because we want to, we want to give the Chair consideration to give some input on this.
Okay.
So, so I would say, and we can go through, you know, Tony, we can go through. I can tell you of, of the names listed. Sarah Callahan, she's with the Milton Youth Advocates. Tanya Frank, she is both a parent and has experience working in school, doing guidance and social work.
Gwyneth Santa, for example.
Say again?
Gwyneth Santa.
She's a high school student.
There it is. I didn't get to that next line. Okay.
Samantha Kira Glazer. She's a middle school student.
Winston Daly, I believe, in his CV, he has experience.
Right, he has a lot of experience working with youth and programming.
And, okay. And I guess, you know, Katie, to your point about the library, you know, that's not on the, the...
But I, I...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I think that was, that was something that I believe Sarah Callahan said was something, an oversight. They actually did mean to have the library involved, but, but we could also, Sarah's here.
Sarah's here.
I agree with having the library represented, because they're the ones who came into the prior board and raised this as an issue several months ago, because it's such an, an issue that impacts them disproportionately, so I, I think we should have the library represented.
Right, and, and I think too, Magda Cupidon can offer some direct observations and, and experience with, with youth and what, what works at the moment, which is wonderful. It's just a good relationship.
Any, Tony, you had raised at some point a while back about the name. Do we, any, any issues there? Or do we... Not to, not to, not to put you on the spot.
You're not putting me on the spot, no. I had this discussion with Sarah. We talked about this, and, and we sort of tabled it at the time being, for the time being, rather, with the understanding that we would both put our thinking caps on and come up with something that would potentially be an improvement. I haven't come up with anything better by the look that Sarah just shot me. She hasn't either. So in the absence of something that's an improvement, you know, I think we kind of continue with the status quo. Again, for people that are just coming into this, the, the discussion that we had prior was that we were, not just myself, but others were of the opinion that, that youth task force, task force in particular, has somewhat of a militant feel to it, so the, to the extent that we're able to soften that or improve upon it. But it's incumbent upon me to come up with a better suggestion, which I haven't, so I'll continue to work on it. Maybe we can...
We can always change the name.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments? One thing that I would suggest in, in terms of the motion is, is, is just to say, the motion to establish a youth task force and to appoint, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then we want to make sure we get the name correct of the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition member.
Dr. Susan Coke.
Dr. Susan Coke.
Wise.
Hyphen.
Okay.
Coke. Okay. All right. And I will give this to whomever wants to make the motion, so they can read the name, if that's okay, Mike?
Yep.
Aye. Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we establish a youth task force and appoint Sarah Callahan, 111 Elm Street, Kristen LaCasse of 76 Decker Street, Tanya Frank, 86 Cypress Road, Winston Daly, 411 Elliott Street, Kira Glazer, student at Pierce Middle School, Gwyneth Santa, student at Milton High School, Michael Dennehy, Town Administrator, Paul D'Amano, Milton Park and Recreation Department, Magda Cupidon of the Milton Public Library, Head of Teen Services, School Resource Officers, Christopher Potts and Maria Martin, and Dr. Susan Coke Weser as the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition's representative to the youth task force.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Susan, all right, we'll, we'll, all right, we'll get the spelling, we'll get the spelling correct. We'll get the spelling. The, the, the spelling of Dr. Susan Coke Weser, W-E-S-E-R.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. All right. So we got the spelling correct, so all those, just to, just to make sure we got it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right. Item 14, the much-anticipated Town Administrator's report.
Drum roll, please. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Board. Couple things along the lines of regionalization. I received a letter from Mayor Coke in Quincy. He's hosting a meeting on Wednesday at Quincy City Hall for the Boston Harbor Metropolitan Area Flooding Issue, which Milton and many of the surrounding communities witnessed during the 4 March nor'easter, so the 4, you know, there was one in January, so late, late winter nor'easter. So he's got a group coming together of appointed and elected officials on Wednesday at, at Quincy City Hall. Obviously, we saw it in Granite Ave and Riverside and some other streets down off of Granite Ave, where we literally had to close the road for hours upon time, so it's very relevant. And you didn't think it would touch our area, but, I mean, there were some pictures of 88 Wharf, and, and you couldn't see some of those boats down there. Certainly couldn't see the pavement, so it's, it, I, I welcome the opportunity to represent Milton there. I'm going to take Tom McCarthy from our Public Works Department, who led much of the road closure along with the Milton Police Department. And then as, as we get along, I think they're going to be looking for some subject matter experts along the planning lines, a master plan implementation committee, stuff like that. So that's Wednesday at Quincy City Hall, so I thank Mayor Coke for inviting the Town of Milton. We've got some good news again. Good news always seems to come from Bill Ritchie. He informed me today that Power Options has notified the town that we have won a $10,000 grant to install an electrical vehicle charging station at Town Hall. So I hope Darryl Warner is watching this evening. If you build it, they will come. So there's, there's more to come on the details of that grant, but it's a step in the right direction. It'll certainly push us towards purchasing electric vehicles for the town, and then with the ability for people to come to Town Hall and, and charge their vehicle. It's, I saw it in Boston, we had vehicle charging stations at my, at my main garage there, and you'd see constituents come do business and, and plug their vehicle in for an hour or two, so very good, step in the right direction, and more to come on that one. Rideshare, this, this was news to me until we got the email a couple of weeks ago, but for every rideshare that originates in Massachusetts, the rideshare companies have to donate 20 cents to that. In calendar year 2017, there were almost 65 million rideshares in Massachusetts. 136, 134,000 of those originated in Milton, and for that, the state is compensating us half of the 20 cents that they're collecting. So we're in the process of receiving a, almost a $14,000 check from the state with the caveat that we use that towards traffic or transportation mitigation issues, and our Public Works Department has accepted the grant, and we will be buying... and we will be buying seven of the solar-powered portable flashing stop signs. For those who aren't familiar with it, there's one currently on Brush Hill Road as you exit onto the Parkway. It's not the be-all and all. They claim it prevents 54% more stop sign cruise-throughs. But yeah, well, there, you'll see them popping up in communities in greater Boston, and this is part of that mitigation from the money that we receive. So I wouldn't expect to get that every year, but you never know.
And those collect data too, Mike, right?
They do as well, yeah.
I think that data's really helpful.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
I was going to get into some of the data that we collected on a couple of the signs tonight, if we have time, but it's some of the data that the radar speed monitors are collecting is extraordinary. And there's 2,300 vehicles going down Governor's Road Monday to Friday, with a significant drop-off on the weekends, literally half the vehicles. On the weekends, which tells me that people are cutting through the town, that either the Southeast Expressway is not doing it for them, or other tributary roads in and along the Quincy or Canton side of town aren't working, and they're, and they're taking the alternative, which is, is cutting, cutting through some of our streets, so. Thankfully, the chief works with some of this data and can put some enforcement and resources at those areas. If you take a look at, at the radar speed monitor on Central Avenue, I think very few people are doing the speed limit. Former Board, Board of Selectmen member Tom Hurley would talk about streets that are built to go 25 and streets that aren't. I think the improvements to Central Ave have made it a little more... People like to go faster on Central Ave. So you will see a cruiser out on Turner's Pond every once in a while to try to mitigate some of that speeding issues. But for the most part, as, as these devices collect data, I can confirm what the police chief had told me when I first started, is that it's more of a volume problem than a speeding problem. They, they do collect it and they average it. You do get the crazy person that's doing 68 miles an hour on Governor's Road, but you also get an average of 21, 22 miles per hour. So it's that constant flow of vehicles. If you have young children, when they can't get across the street, or they're afraid to go out and follow a bouncing ball, that type of stuff. When you see 2,300 vehicles a day on a, on a road like Governor's Road, you know...
So maybe we can, we can put that on the agenda for a report.
Yeah.
Future agenda.
And two other things. Mary Martin, nearest and dearest to Emily, had her last day here at Town Hall after 36 years of wonderful civil service in many capacities. So we wish, we want to thank Mary for all her service to the town, and wish her good luck, extra time with her beautiful grandsons, I'm sure. But yeah, good, good luck to Mary, and thanks for a wonderful career. You'll be missed by the town of Milton. And then a warm welcome to two new employees that started today. Christine Stanton, a lifelong Milton resident, started today in the Selectmen's Office. And I came back from lunch, and she was still here, so that's a good thing. And John Grow is our first technician appraiser down in the Assessor's Office. So I just want to welcome Christine and John publicly, and maybe have them in here one night, and talk about where they came from and what their plans are, and... But yeah, so we bid adieu to Ms. Martin, and we say hello to Ms. Stanton and Mr. Grow, so. That's all I have for time.
All right, item 15, Chairs Report. There is, the chair is not here, so there is no Chairs Report. So anyone else have anything that they want to report on? I guess we'll first go to Melinda.
Of course I do, if I can find it. I don't want to take up too much time. I, there it is. So just, just two things. I actually met with Lauren Mazier today. She's our Assistant Planner on Housing. We're, we're edging towards creating a charge for the Board of Selectmen to look at, and composition, as well as discussing getting updated housing and land counts. So we talked about that, and she's speaking with our planner, Bill Clark, to see how that can be done, and how quickly it might be done. And we've also talked about creating a larger planning group meeting, or like a working group meeting for sometime in the fall, possibly. We need that data, but those are things we talked about. And then I was at the COA last week, and people there were wonderful, I have to say. Really great and lovely to see people, especially so early on a Thursday morning. And there were a couple of questions asked there. Continues to be a lot of interest in the animal shelter, and when it will, will start to be worked on, as well as the budget. And the other question was on Adam's Court. Many people can't get out in the evening for some of the meetings that we've had, and looking at the two-dimensional representations has been difficult for people to sort of see what's changed. And I had asked about having the model perhaps brought there, and our Chair, Richard Wells, suggested that perhaps the Falcone Company would be good enough to do a daytime meeting there. And, and they, I think they've accepted, and we have some dates where, that haven't gotten to them yet, but the COA was very interested, so hopefully we'll, we'll be able to do that. My only regret is that I know most of us work during the day, and might, wouldn't really be able to be there, but I would also like to let the Planning Board know that, that this is, this is happening. Richard may have done that, actually, but I'll, I'll check with that. So, but I just wanted people to know and to get feedback and thoughts on that.
Katie, Tony?
I have nothing to add.
Katie?
I just want to throw out a thank you. Bob Sheffield came into our last meeting at Citizen Speak and invited us to come to the July 4th races at Kelly Field, and I took him up on that, and got to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with Bob. And Elizabeth Thomas sang the National Anthem, and it was a very nice event. They had a lot of races for kids. I hadn't been to it since I was a kid, so it was fun to go back and see it. But I wanted to thank Bob Sheffield and the members of the Kiwanis Club, Pine Tree Brook residents, who were Bob's neighbors, who came out and helped man the tables and support it, and the Auxiliary Fire Department and the Park Department, because they did a, it was a very hot, humid day, as everybody knows, and they put together a good program for kids, and it was, it was a fun time for a lot of kids. And it ended around 10:00 or 10:30 before the weather really got more unbearable than it already was. But, but, you know, Bob was out there in the sun. A lot of people were standing in the shade. I was under the trees in the shade, but Bob was out there in the middle of the field in the blazing sun with his megaphone, calling all the races. So he did a great job, and thank you to the Kiwanis and to Bob, and to all who participated.
Not just for kids. There are pictures of me participating in the three-legged race with Elizabeth Thomas not too long ago, so anyone interested in embarrassing me can look for those pictures.
They did have some mom and dad races, too, and some other adult races, so, yeah. But it was, it was a nice event.
Thank you, Katie.
They have the hoodies?
They had hoodies, they had water, they had flags, so all the kids went home with something, yes.
Very good.
All right, anything else on reports? Seeing none, Citizen Speak response. I will say that on the Citizen Speak presentation by, by Mr. Corcoran, I think this board, my view is that this board has gone out of its way, certainly over the last several weeks, to include both Mr. Corcoran and his clients on the agenda. They were included on one agenda meeting, and we had a special meeting that we, that we, that we all attended with the Planning Board on this. So I, so I, to suggest that there's an issue because they didn't happen to be on the agenda tonight, I think is overstating it a bit. I think this board has, has acted quite diligently on this project, and will continue to. Just, but given the fact that it's not on the agenda tonight doesn't suggest that this board isn't working with all deliberate speed on that. So that's all that I have to say on that. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything. Seeing none. Future agenda items.
Maybe late summer, Melinda, would you say maybe late August? The Finance Committee should probably be on the agenda, just to give a report as to what we're working on. We had our first meeting, so maybe, but we have, we have another meeting scheduled for later July, and we're going to start looking at our financial policies, so maybe we could be given update later on in the summer about what we're working on.
So maybe the, let's look at our meetings, the 13th or the 27th? Do you want to, maybe one of those days?
Maybe the 27th, because I think we're going to leave a little time to...
Probably the 27th.
27th. Melinda?
Sorry, I just, I got this piece of paper as you were talking and made the mistake of looking down. Did, did you actually talk about the working group?
I'm going to ask for a...
That has been asked about by Mr. Corcoran. I know that you mentioned it the last time that they were in, that he was hoping that there would be a working group with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board.
Yeah, I mean, it's not our agenda tonight. It's not our agenda tonight.
Right, but you said we would be talking about that. I just wanted to make sure you did say that.
Oh, you mean for future agenda...
Yes, that I heard you say that correctly.
Oh, I certainly think so.
Okay, just, just making sure.
And the Chair and the, and the, and the way we've been proceeding is that the Chair and the Town Administrator have been, you know, creating the agenda, and I assume that'll be the case going forward, so I...
I just wanted to make sure that I heard, because I looked down and didn't, didn't quite hear everything. Thank you.
Anything else?
I did have a question on a live mic update, but Mike told me that we're going to have an update on that, the 23rd.
Yeah, possibly approval of the contract. We're working through the last final details with the Bicycle Advisory Committee Representative, Lee Toma. As many of you are aware, some of the yellow bikes from Quincy are appearing in Milton, and there have been some articles, most recently in Salem, of bike pollution that rolled out a green bike, similar to Lime Bike, called Ant Bike. And there was a story on WBZ over the weekend where there's some outraged constituents that this bike, bike ride share program isn't necessarily everything they thought it was going to be, and the rollout was aggressive and maybe a bit too aggressive, so we're working through some stuff with that. I plan on appearing at the Traffic Commission to work through some of the issues I've seen. I've had, personally had to reach out to OFO to try to circle the wagons and come up with some bikes that were, you know, left on Pleasant Street for an extended period of time.
Right, so OFO's the one in Quincy, that's the yellow one.
Correct.
And the one in Salem is called what?
Ant Bike, A-N-T, yeah.
So why don't we put this on the agenda? We don't want to have a discussion for nothing, something that's not on the agenda. So we'll put this on the agenda certainly for the, maybe the 23rd, and have a discussion of it then. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
No, well, someone make the motion. I make them...
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you all, and we will see you again on July 23rd, and I will happily recede back into the anonymous, anonymous Vice Chair's seat. Thank you all.
I don't think it's anonymous, Mike.